Does the audio sound?
Does it sound okay? Can you hear me?
Uh-huh.
Yes, okay, great.
It could be louder.
It could be louder.
Could be louder.
It could be louder. Well, thank you all. Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Welcome to our candidate forum event. We are hopeful for a really informative, engaging evening as we hear from the local candidates for city council weighing in on the issue of affordable housing. So, all of you here either don't watch baseball or you're gonna be checking your phones. Totally fine. We have no way to predict if this is going to happen, so... Local government has a big impact on the work of affordable housing and HRB's advocacy work focuses on our local government because we understand how much influence that they have over the work that we do and also the future of affordable housing on Bainbridge Island. Before we do get started, I just want to address a request that we made to city council last week that's kind of taken on a life of its own in the community, especially on the social media. Recently, we approached the city with a request to change the current AMI restriction on seven of our units at the Oliver. And right now, the city requires that we serve only households at 60% of area median income and below there. And we made the request to the city to increase this restriction to 80% of area median income and below, which would allow us to serve a slightly broader range of low-income households. We made this request because we were encountering a number of local workers who need affordable housing, who have sought affordable housing at HRB, but who make just a little bit more than 60% of AMI. We saw this need, and unlike most other restrictions, we have to operate within. We had the opportunity to appeal to those setting the restriction, meaning the city in this case. Most of the time, we have very little flexibility with our work. State and federal funding regulates, generally speaking, who we can serve. The system is inflexible, it's imperfect, and changing it is slow. It takes years to effect state law and federal change. We almost never have the opportunity to appeal to our legislators for even a little bit of flexibility, but in this case, the restriction's regulated by the city and it can be changed by the city. So, that's really rare, and we wanted to try to take the opportunity to affect change there if we could. To be clear, all of the rental, all of the units at the Oliver are currently rented. We've been asked why we don't just adjust the rent to fix the, to fit every household's need, and while we would love to do that, we can't do that in every circumstance while also ensuring that they won't be rent burdened and then still provide well-maintained units with reserves and money for maintenance and all the things. So, it's just not possible for us to do that, to just rent for everyone. These units do not have ongoing subsidy in them that helps us to house people that are well below 60% of AMI. They just don't. It's a difficult thing. We work with this all the time in our world. We've seen some concern expressed by community members and local leaders if this request was made because there's a lack of households at 60% of AMI and below or because we can't find them. That is not the case. For the Oliver units, we have 245 households on our waiting list for one-bedroom units. Ninety-two percent of those people are under 60% of AMI. The households are there, the need is there. We house these households at every opportunity. So, the request is not about who we cannot find, uh, who we cannot find. This request is about those we can't house because of current restrictions and the local workers that we're hoping to offer affordable housing to in the future when units become open again at the Oliver. So, I just wanted to make that statement. So, thank you.
That's good.
Thank you all for being here, and I'm gonna turn it over to Maggie, who is our host for this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you for being here, everyone. How is the audio? Okay? I'm especially looking towards the back of the room. I've seen some nods. Awesome. Thank you so much. And a huge thank you to Reed Price, who's not here, he's watching the baseball game. But he did come through with his audio equipment for us when we encountered some issues with the library. So, thank you for being flexible. I'm gonna be very quick, so we can just get down to it. I have a few housekeeping notes that I'm gonna turn to council. We're gonna go over how this is gonna go, and then we're gonna kick it off. So, thank you for being here. Most of you know this, but HRB is a nonprofit, so in order to maintain our tax exempt status, we can't endorse any candidate for public office and we can't aid in their election. But we can host events like this where people can come and hear from candidates about the issue of affordable housing and the work that we do. So, a little bit of housekeeping for the library. You'll note in the back, we have the glass doors closed, but just in case you get up to stretch your legs, note that the library is now closed for the day and you need to stay out of the stacks. So, don't wander into the library, stay here and hear from our candidates. Okay, so, questions tonight are already prepared. You will have seen our students up front, they've been taking notes since they arrived. They have the questions in front of them. We won't be taking a live audience Q and A. It's a different kind of event in order to run a tight ship and respect everyone's time. You are welcome to come up and ask questions of the candidates after, or if you need assistance getting in touch with their campaign, I can also help you with that if you have questions for them in terms of their campaign versus maybe people who are currently on council. Okay, so, a quick note about fact-checking. I am great on my feet, but I can't live fact-check and run this event. I don't have an earpiece, I don't have a media squad. But, I will say, we are recording this event and we will post it to make it available for people who couldn't attend tonight, and it'll also help us go back through. If anything rises to the level of us being able to use a primary source to correct something, particularly about the work that we do, we may do that after in written form and share it with people who attended the event. Okay, hey, candidates, how are you doing tonight?
Great.
Great.
Great to be here.
Good, good to be here. Great, grand. Okay, so, they have their questions in front of them. They will all answer the same question. So, there are four questions, there will be four rounds of questions. Each candidate will answer the same question, and then we'll move on to the next. Each candidate will all have one and a half minutes to answer your question. If you glance towards the back of the room, Kaylee is here to assist. When you have gone through one minute, she'll hold up a yellow. That's a warning, you have 30 seconds left. When your minute and a half is up, she will hold up the red. Great, I think you all see it. Kaylee's job is to just give you the visual, I'm the enforcer. So, if for some reason someone goes over time spectacularly, I will remind you that it's time to move on. I don't expect that this evening. So, this isn't a debate, there won't be a chance to go back and forth or to respond to each other, so your answer is your answer. And my last note, there are less questions than there are candidates. There are four questions, but six candidates. So, the way that we handled the signing order was literally me picking names out of a hat. I wrote everyone's name on a piece of paper, and I picked who would go first for each question. So, once that person goes first, I'm gonna ask the candidates that you will just pass the mic to your right. And then we will just loop around and I will let you know who's going next. So, candidates, do you have any questions for me?
No.
Sarah, go ahead.
So, number one?
Yes.
Did we just say that at the start of the first question?
Let, let's just do it this way. Thank you for clarifying. So, they have four questions, but actually, one is not about affordable housing. You just need to know who they are. So, the first round, I'm just gonna ask you, and this is a good time for us to test, this mic is even better. Wow, okay. Good thing you all have this mic. So, first, I'm gonna ask you just to state your name and the position for which you're running. We'll go down the line, and then if you could just pass it back, we'll go from there. You're welcome.
All right, welcome, everybody. My name is Laura Lant. I am running for city council, North Ward, District Seven.
Clarence Moriwaki, Central Ward, District Five. MC Hawks and Trakken are also playing.
I'm Sarah Blossom, and I'm running for the South Ward, Team.
Joe Dietz, North Ward, District Seven.
Peter Raffa, Central Ward, District Five.
And Mike Nelson, South Ward, District Three.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Actually, Peter, you can hold on to that microphone.
Should I win a prize?
Yeah.
Well, the prize is that you will be the first person to answer the first question.
I'm not sure I won.
Yeah. In just a moment, Peter, you will be up first, you'll have a minute and a half to answer the first question. I will read it for the audience, and I'll make sure that you all heard it. Please let me know if you need me to read it again. And then you'll just pass it to your right, and then we're gonna work together with this one microphone system, Mike, and we'll come back around and I'll help hand it to you. Laura. Okay, so, Peter and audience, the first question is, how are affordable housing and diversity linked? And why is this conversation important?
Thank you. I think one of the reasons we have a fair housing act is so that we have more diversity in housing in general, and especially in affordable housing, because diversity is important. I'm all about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Conversation is important because of the current climate we find ourselves in and the nation seems to be swinging in the wrong direction, in my opinion, and we need to include more people. The more diverse we are, I think, the stronger we are. It's why they have menus in restaurants. We, we enjoy each other's companies, each other's cultures, we learn from each other, and I think it's important to have diversity within affordable housing and everything else we do.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. We could pass it to your right. And Mike Nelson, I can read the question again just for everyone, so we can keep track. How are affordable housing and diversity linked? And why is this conversation important?
Yeah, so I think it, I think it really comes down to the word equity, right? And, and it's just the idea that if you start behind, it's kind of hard to get ahead, right? And, and so, I think it's just important to say I support affordable housing, and I think it's really important. And I just think you need to make sure that when you're doing it, you do it thoughtfully and that you maintain the community's character and that you get community buy-in. Because I think when you don't get community buy-in, it makes it harder to do future projects and then you get further behind. And I also would just say top-down mandates are not helpful, because then it feels like people are, you know, they're kind of forced to do something they don't agree with, and then that hurts buyers. So, so I think it's an important conversation, and I think it's one we should be having, and it's about, you know, helping people to, to get a leg up when they need it, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We can work together. Oh, Peter, thank you so much. Okay. The question is, how are affordable housing and diversity linked? And why is this conversation important?
All right, thank you. Affordable housing and diversity are linked in so many ways, not just racial equity, ability, age, financial reasons, it's all linked. Affordable housing and diversity go hand in hand and will for all of us at some point in time. At some point in time, we don't have the money to get what we want, and we are looking for maybe a rental, we're looking for some other kind of a housing situation. At some point, maybe you have had housing and now you no longer have housing, and you're looking for housing and there is no housing. I will cite this, that generational poverty, lack of opportunity, lack of rental units, people are already starting behind the game when they are entering the housing market. And then, as we find out that there's very few housing units available in any area, it gets, it's difficult. My mother moved here in the last years of her life, she signed up for bench place apartments, and it was a year after she died, three years after she was on the waitlist, that she got the note that she was in. So, it's important.
Okay. Question is, how are affordable housing and diversity linked? And why is this conversation important?
When we talk about diversity, the richness of a community is defined by how many cultures, religions, ages, incomes, and rest disabilities they all add to your community. And a lot of people, especially on ages and income, who are working class people, they can't afford the places here. And so, that adds to diversity. We need more younger families to make our community grow, to make it richer, to have support in the schools, and it just makes a place more viable, viable. And our city is, we're at an average age of 55, that's 10 years older than the state average, and about 12 years older than the county average. And that's a broad delta to have. We're not gonna have a successful community if we don't have younger generations to step in and keep us moving forward. So, socioeconomic diversity is huge, and that defines, a lot of us, I find, because of the income, because of the jobs available, we don't have those kind of housing opportunities for them. So, that's how it is, that is how you get more diversity because of the opportunities for families who are wealthy, who are lesser in income, to be able to afford to be part of our community. And that's really a key way that our community's gonna grow, maybe prosper and be successful.
Okay. You don't, you don't need to read that. I was gonna say, I think, I think we're good. I was just rolling with the, thank you for cutting me off, my goodness, Sarah.
You're welcome. So, affordable housing and diversity are linked in several ways. It's been mentioned economic diversity, you want diversity of housing for all the various income levels of people who want to live in the community that they work in. Also, that's been mentioned, diversity in our, in our age. The school district, for example, is really hurting due to low enrollment because we don't have a lot of housing that attracts young families. I think that the conversation about diversity that is important to have, but is really hard to have, has to do with the discussion regarding, you know, past housing policies in our country and lending policy that have prevented certain people of certain cultures and races from being able to build generational wealth, which is what gives a lot of us a leg up. And that is a conversation I think we should be having. I would love for the Race Equity Advisory Committee to take that on and bring in some speakers. It's a difficult conversation to have, but it's something we all need to acknowledge and be aware of, that history.
Great question. Yes, thank you, Sarah, for bringing up the historical part, where, you know, there was historical redlining, I think even on Bainbridge. So, thankfully, that is over. However, we, we are not a diverse community. I'm sorry, I'm looking at myself and those of us in the audience. How many people are under 40 years of age? Raise your hand. Okay, all right. So, we, we have a diversity issue in this island. We, you know, people of, those of us, you know, I'm 68, I think what Clarence you said, the average age is 55. We are an older population, we, our incomes levels are higher because of the housing prices. People with families with more than one, like, I had one kid, so, she's now in college, but people with families lower income, it's extremely difficult. So, this is why we're seeing the school enrollment going down. So, why does this matter? Is diversity bringing strength to a community? You need a mixture of different ages, ethnicities, people, you know, different, I'll say, racial matures, that just makes a more healthy community. And a healthy community is a happier community than just a homogeneous group, which unfortunately, we're 85% wide on this island. So, so, it is very important to have, it makes it a more, a healthier community. We are not a diverse community, and I, this is why I'm committed to doing something about it with affordable housing. My entire term, two terms, oh, I have supported affordable housing.
You can actually hold on to the mic.
Oh, you're next.
Yes.
Oh, 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 okay.
Your name was the second drawn out of the hat.
Oh.
Okay, so that was our first round.
I know the question.
I have gotten good feedback, thank you, Sarah. I will not read the question every round. I just didn't want to shift on them in the moment, so I won't do it for this round. But I will read it for the room this first time and for you, Joe Dietz. How will you lead Bainbridge Island through the changes that come with planning for more affordable housing?
Certainly. I, well, first off, I will lead by showing, for example, what have I done in my, now I'm in my eighth year on council. I, I've, particularly for affordable housing, liver boards, we, as a group, we voted to approve keeping the housing rates, the livable rates at an affordable rate when Department Natural Resources raised the rates to City of Bainbridge Island by 80%. So, liver boards are not being priced off the island. We approved what we call a chip grant, which is an infrastructure funding grant that the city can apply and provide, which we did to Housing Resources Bainbridge. $480,000 went to the Erbson Community Project. When I was with the Kits Up Regional Coordinating Council as chair last year, I worked with other leaders in the community. We approved the pre-permitted, free, pre-approved, permitted 80 accessory dwelling units, which this council just approved, and of course, supporting Bethany Lutheran and constantly speaking out on this. So, I, I do it as part of my role as a council member, and this is what you, what you see me do now, you will most definitely see me continue to do it in my third term. So, it is, I lead by example as a council member, and you will, I, I have never backed down on affordable housing, I will not do so, and those of you in the room know that. So, thank you.
No, it's on, sorry. How we lead Bainbridge Island through the changes that come with planning for more affordable housing? I just read the question. Okay. Well, I think there's a lot of discussion. I'd like to hear from the community more than we have in the past, and I think that the community, there's so many voices here, so many experiences here that we can gain from by listening. And there's also alternatives to affordable housing. In addition to all the property that the city owns, there are some private property owners that have property down in Winslow that we can engage in conversations with for affordable housing. I believe social media has shown that the Pavilion is one, the Hager Scribbler property, which is behind the old Virginia Mason building, is also a possible property that we could talk to. We could also revisit the Suzuki property, perhaps, if we talk to the Parks Department. There are other alternatives, I think, and there's also some other individuals who own property that we could talk to about doing mixed housing, both market rate and affordable housing, similar to the Oliver, that we could provide more affordable housing in other areas within Winslow and the Ferry District. And I'm happy that they're doing the liver boards, and I'm happy that ADUs are being expanded and loosening some permits so that more ADUs could be on the island, because I think that's important, too. People could live and rent their house out to a smaller family and get it in the back. There's plenty of options and alternatives for that before the rent card goes up.
Okay, so I would say with focus, but also with balancing other issues that are important, such as our limited natural resources. I just don't think it can be looked at entirely in a vacuum, so I think we do have to be thoughtful about it. I think I would provide a legal viewpoint, of course, understanding the Broke Management Act, also understanding that we're supposed to plan for and accommodate it, and that if we're required to build it by law, then that makes it an unfunded mandate. And so, I actually wanna push back on the state, because I think, while it's laudable that the state wants to increase the supply of affordable housing, I think they should appropriate some money to help us. That's the way I feel about it. And so, I just think communities like Bainbridge Island need the flexibility to do what makes sense for our community, and that these top-down mandates don't work, not financially, but also, you know, it hurts, as I said, community buy-in, right? Look at 625, when things don't go well or there's an issue with the process, making changes outside the comp plan before finishing the groundwater management plan, half a parking spot per unit, not doing a traffic study, using eminent domain to take the notch property, not doing the environmental reviews. These sorts of things undermine community trust, and I think they, they hurt us when we go to do the next project, right? And I think that that is an issue. But I also, you know, I'm gonna echo a little bit of what Peter said. I like the ADUs. I also think we should look at denser units. I also think we should think about potentially single-family units or single-family homes and larger units for families. I just turned 40 years old, that's why I didn't raise my hand, and I have three kids soon, so...
That's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so how I would lead Bainbridge Island through the changes that come of planning for more affordable housing? First and foremost, I would start with gaining community support through intense communication and transparency. In order to create more housing, affordable housing, you need community buy-in, and you do that with talking to people early and often, and explaining the changes to, to proposals, et cetera. I'd also bring more stakeholders to the table. We've talked a lot about workforce housing, we've talked a lot about grocery store workers and baristas. Well, how come Safeway isn't sitting up here with us? Where's TNC? Where are these big companies that we need to find housing for their employees? I don't, I'm not intimating that they have to pay for affordable housing across the board, but I'd sure like to hear their opinion, and I haven't heard that yet. I'd also be focused more on our other agents, the schools, the parks, fire, everyone else, and to work together, not in a silo, not in a vacuum. I also would support creating more infill using subsidies and incentivizing renting at below-market rates.
Thank you. One way you lead is to be real with people. The only, the way you get a lot of affordable housing is through density, and building apartments and building apartment buildings are cheaper than building single-family lots, and you can get a lot more people in an area. That's just a fact. And through this process, we have to point out that this is where the density should grow, because this is the area that is closest services and the rest. We're going through something right now with 625, and I'll tell you how I'm leading. One of the sad things I'm hearing are really awful stereotypes of people who aren't working. There was someone who wrote to us that we worked on it our lives, and we have our waterfront home, and people who don't make enough money shouldn't live here. I've said publicly at the deus, when people argue that this is due property, it shouldn't be done there, so workers don't deserve use? Be leading about everyone you want in this community, and I've been outright about it. I'm not afraid of it either. And also pushing back on a lot of the myths that you hear. Many myths like, it's gonna be too polluting. Well, we should've shut down the No Kings Rally then, because there are too many people hanging out there. And the High Five, Highlight Restaurant, they're sitting there every day with the traffic going bad. So, it's a fear tactic to try to make people not want something that they're not comfortable with. And that's what we can do with leadership. Say it outright, say it loudly, and say it correctly, because we are trying to appeal, are trying to attract those people who are trying to diversify our community.
I was out door belling last week, and I had somebody enter the door, and he said, he always found it interesting when candidates, on the one hand, said they wanted to protect the character of Bainbridge, and on the other hand, they also wanted to build affordable housing. And he didn't understand that, because he sees them as in conflict with each other. And I don't think they have to be. We've already heard once tonight that we have to protect the character. Well, I think our character is more than our built environment. I think the character is also defined by the people who live here. And as someone who grew up here, I've seen the character change a lot already by missing people, people who left the community, because they couldn't afford to live here anymore. So, I would, that is character I would like to be brought back. It is difficult, and I think one of the difficulties is one of the funding sources that will probably be the most used at the federal level now is the LIAC, which is funding 625, which requires large-scale projects, and that is something we're not accustomed to seeing here. So, that is, that is gonna be difficult to, I guess, sell the community on, how can we build projects like this that will fit into the scale of building we're used to seeing?
Do you want me to go again? Why, just hold the microphone and pass it to your left, because Clarence, you will answer our third question first. And I will read it once for our audience. What do you think is the biggest barrier to accomplishing more progress when it comes to affordable housing? And what will you do to address it?
I think exactly two things, and one is just the reality. It's just an expensive island to build on. Land is really expensive, and the building costs material, building materials are up. So, building anything on our island just costs a little more. So, that's, that's just a hard box challenge. The other thing that I think we need to make a barrier through is to get through, and I kind of tied on the previous comment, a lot of folks have fear of change. We have to point out that this is one mandated by state law. And by the way, we make planning what it is, it doesn't mean there's gonna be 10,000 people moving in tomorrow. Under current zoning right now, we could probably take in 4,000 people at the current zoning and density without doing a darn thing increasing. We've only increased by 4,000 people in the last 20 years. So, it's not like it's gonna be this massive boom of which is being pushed to fear people out about affordable housing or any kind of development. So, I think going through, and you're saying that the biggest barrier, I feel, and I don't like to use acronyms, but those who don't want change, those who don't be welcoming, you have to get past that, and there's always gonna be that. People are fearful of change, change is a normal reaction. But we have to do these things to meet state law, as well as doing the right thing to try to diversify our community.
I think the biggest barrier, well, there's two, and they're both related to money. One is the cost of construction, and the other is the lack of funding. One is the cost of construction, and the other is the lack of funding to build the unit. There's nothing that we can do about the cost of construction. We can do our best to find funding and make it available, but I do feel like the state is putting us in a position where they're trying to solve the housing crisis with land use policy, and I don't think that land use policy will solve the housing crisis. I think a lot of it is out of our control. So, I think it is important to support any project that comes forward, such as much as the city can, whether it's HRB Erickson, or another project like Finch Green would be wonderful. I do think another difficulty we're going to have in making progress is, where I would push back on the state with House Bill 1220 is how our numbers are allocated. I think we have forty percent of our allocation for fifty percent of area median income below, and that leaves a lot of income levels out of the mix. I think it'll leave out a lot of our workforce, a lot of our families that we need to attract for the school district, and so I think we need some more flexibility in how we plan for the affordable housing.
Great. Great, great question. Well, I had two barriers, and I just thought of another one. Clearly, funding, cost of land, as Clarence mentioned, you know, our land prices are very expensive. It's no accident that we, the city's been looking at land that we own, I shouldn't say "we," we own, primarily Suzuki and 65, and also we do own waterfront property, too. So, that always gives us a leg up for, to keep the costs down, because that's incredibly important. I would be interested in exploring some construction options. I've heard some good things about modular construction, for example, but yeah, so responding to the construction costs. So, funding is always tough. In fact, you know, when we were talking about 65, there was primarily two funding sources. One is the federal grants, and then there's what the Housing Trust Fund from the state. So, outside of, and there's just very little outside of that. So, we're constricted by the housing. Mind you, we're not buying, we're not building cheap property. I've heard people talk about how expensive these properties are. They're not much different than market rate costs. They're not. So, the, it's not like you have a cheap building with affordable housing, and that, but what you do have is not much revenue coming in to support it. So, we have, we have to address those challenges and use the advantages that we have, like property that we own, the significant. Also, I really want to address the community aspect. I've heard so many times that people would say, "You know, I wish we'd learned more about this earlier on," say 65 is the one I'm referring to, even though we, that's all right. Okay. More to come.
Thank you. I think it's already been said, the biggest barrier to accompli, accomplishing this is cost, and the fact that we live on an island. So, we have a limited amount of land on an island. We're not Brumerton, we're not a city, even though Bainbridge Island is a city, or we're unlike other cities. So, we have a limited amount of land, and the land we do have is expensive. So, yes, I think we need to start, as Joe said, with the property that the city owns. That's the first thing, and as I mentioned before, we could talk to private owners of property that would be willing to develop both market rate and affordable housing. But the biggest barrier, I think, is the cost. Like the 625 is the second most expensive project in the entire Seattle area as far as affordable housing goes. It's very expensive, and that's because of the land that we're on. So, I think we've worked with the, with the community and the limited land that we have to provide affordable housing, because affordable housing is critical.
Yeah, I think, again, it's money, right? It's expensive to live here, it's expensive to build here. It's a nice place to live, it's safe, it's clean, it has good schools, it's rural, it's a slower pace of life, it's not Seattle, so it's expensive here. And obviously, to build it, it's expensive, too. And, you know, Bainbridge Island has a tight budget, right? And if you take the cost for 625 Winslow Way, it's more than five hundred thousand dollars per unit, right? And so, essentially, for our entire annual revenue of about thirty-one million dollars, you could get sixty-two units at that price, right? So, that's, that's a real limit, so I think we really do need help from the state, right? That's, I can't say it enough, I think they need to appropriate some money to help us. But then also, water, infrastructure, roads, right? Well, you know, we're a sole-source aquifer, the, our aquifers are experiencing net drawdown now, modeling studies show significant net drawdown moving forward, so we're kind of on an unsustainable path. And so, from my view, it's not, don't do affordable housing. My goal is not to oppose affordable housing, it's to, it's actually to oppose market rate upzoning, because I don't want to grow the overall population beyond, beyond what we're supposed to, right? And, and out of the, out of the one thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven units we're supposed to plan to, for one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine are affordable units, and I support that, but I don't support going beyond that. That's where I stand. Thank you.
I'll do it, Peter. You're just such a gentleman.
One day I'll get up and get it myself.
What I think is the biggest barrier to progress towards affordable housing is surprise, cost and funding. It's been said several times already. I do think that, so currently, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund gets one-tenth of one percent annually, that's just over eight hundred thousand dollars, not including interest, but maybe, I think this year was an extra one hundred thousand dollars. So, just under a million dollars for, for this year is what's, what we, what the revenues are. The question is, what to do with that amount of money to make a difference? Do we save it? Do we create a huge pot of money to do something spectacular? Do we do something now, inch by inch, try and make progress? I am very supportive of incentivizing and subsidizing infill housing, finding programs, creating programs for people who are probably in this room, who would like to either rent out a room, rent out their house and move into an ADU, rent out spaces. If the city could incentivize that move, if the city could subsidize renting out your house at a, at an affordable level and make it, make it happen, we don't have to do all of that expensive construction, we can infill from within. I think that's something that we really need to take a look at.
Okay, actually, you can hang on to that.
Okay.
I wish I could take credit for positioning people correctly, but this is just a happy accident. So, we are on to our last question, and I'll read it for the crowd. If elected or re-elected, how will you demonstrate your commitment to affordable housing on Bainbridge Island? Please be specific.
Okay, so, if elected, I will use the fourteen years of experience that I've gained working for the city of Bainbridge Island, the seven years working for the Bainbridge Island School District, and understanding real boots-on-the-ground work. I've seen all the people who've come in trying to build, who would like to build, can't afford to build, people trying to build affordable housing, and it's, it's virtually impossible. How I would demonstrate my commitment to affordable housing? First of all, I'd think about reallocating funding. I would think about the current priorities that this current council has, and I'd think about whether I want to actually spend one million dollars this year on climate-related work. That doesn't include staff, that's just climate-related work, or, I'm sorry, it's a hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollars. Or can I take that money and divert it for the next few years into affordable housing? Things like that, we might actually have to take a look at our priorities. I also would look at possibly increasing the funding from one-tenth of one percent to maybe a little bit more, and that would be one-tenth of one percent of sales tax coming back to that fund. I would also look at staffing at the city. You know, over the course of, gosh, from two thousand eight to two thousand twenty-five, the executive department alone has increased by eight people. They've had, you know, eight folks in two thousand eight, now they have over sixteen full-time equivalent units. I would ask if we can use funding in a different way towards affordable housing. Thank you.
I clearly continue my commitment, as demonstrated. From the very start, twenty-five years ago, I was in Bainbridge Island Health, Housing and Human Services Council, and I've been fighting for that ever since. I also wear another hat. I'm a commissioner on the Kitsap Housing Authority. I'm serving on that commission board, and they also have properties all around the county, including two big ones here, the Road of Dender Apartments across from the high school, and the Finch Place right behind Marge Williams, and we're going to do more. There's more projects coming through that. There are going to be projects in the South End, and also on Cave Avenue, that have just been purchased, that are going to be affordable rental housing. So, I'm reasoning that hat to help make that happen. But here on the island, we have to continue these policies that we're doing now. And by the way, it's not a land issue, eighty-five percent of our island is undeveloped. It's more where we put the land that allows the growth to happen. That's the question. And that's where we have to have the courage to say, "This is where that kind of density is the best fit," and that's, that takes a little leadership. That's where you demonstrate you want it. You take the hits for it, but it's really the right thing to do. It's the only practical thing to do and the affordable thing to do. If we're really truly committed to this, we have to use those tools that make these kind of things work.
I will also continue to demonstrate the commitment that I showed when I was on council for eight years previously, and in my five years on planning commissioner, working on ordinances that allowed Finch Green to enter the planning process, and keeping the Housing Design Demonstration Project active, which allowed HRB Erickson to continue forward. I do think that in the past, we have waited for opportunities to come, organizations to come forward, and I think going forward, we need to be more proactive and seek out opportunities with other taxing jurisdictions, like the school district, the park district, with religious organizations, and, and find those opportunities and then support them. I, I do not have a problem providing density bonuses for affordable housing. I think that that is something that is necessary for projects to pencil out. I also would like to maybe explore something we haven't before, which is, you know, would the island benefit from having its own housing authority? I think that, that would be something interesting to consider, would that open up some different funding opportunities we haven't been able to tap into before, so I guess be more proactive.
Great. Great to see you. Last question, and then we can watch the voting. So...
No, it's in my turn.
Well, so anyway, thank you all. So, I, for myself, again, I'm in my fourth year of my second term, seeking my third term. You will see the same commitment in my third term that you've seen throughout my term as a council member, with all the things I mentioned before. I do want to get back, because I didn't have a chance to talk about barriers, and this is something I want to address. We need to have a better communication. One, we need to admit, we need to do more, okay? And just doing small projects, cutting away from climate-funded work, I would be totally opposed to that. That includes our protecting our water and aquifers in my view. So, don't take away from what we need to protect here, but let's, let's work smarter. One thing the city has done is, we did hire a lobbyist recently, and it turned out to be, I was actually kind of opposed to that, but now it's turned out to be a real, really, really helpful, where we can get much more bang for the buck, if you will, down in Olympia. And by the way, engage with our Kitsap delegation more. You know, you know Representative Hanson, Representative Simmons, and Senator Roloff's did, they were all yays for a House Bill 1220. So, we need to engage more, so there's not this sort of disconnect of what happens in Olympia and has repercussions here. I think we need to close that loop, so have a better connection with what happens in Olympia. Community outreach. I would love to have a outreach, if I can keep talking, but I'll tell you more than...
I love HRB, always loved HRB, support HRB. Tina Gilbert's a very dear friend of mine, we met on the ferry over twenty years ago. She was on the board, she's still on the board, came to me and asked if I could help with development and fundraising for HRB, which I did. I wrote the first development plan, we had our first breakfast. Tweed was our first guest speaker. I brought donors to HRB, I support them myself, so go HRB. And as a city councilperson, if I am fortunate enough to have your vote, become a city councilperson, I will strive hard to support HRB and affordable housing, and I like some of the other ideas that people have brought forward, as far as like a lodging tax, or some small tax for affordable housing, and, what else? What else?
Maybe that's it.
Maybe that's it. What's the score?
Go, Red. No, three.
Okay, stepping back, so my approach would be to try to keep the overall growth number as low as possible while, you know, complying with our legal obligations in creating affordable housing. And so, I would do no changes to our current zoning, and I think we have to be smart about this. I would reject market rate upzoning, inclusionary zoning, and affordable housing overlay, because I think they fail to produce enough, a meaningful amount of affordable housing, and they can result in overall growth numbers far above where I think our limited natural resources and infrastructure can handle. So, I would focus on subsidies, and I would seek reimbursement from the state. And I would try to design a program of subsidies under existing zoning that would look at denser units, ADUs, single-family homes, and larger units, to attract more families like my own to the island, and then workforce housing. And for workforce housing, I would focus on the city owning and managing the properties so that we could give the city the ability to give a preference to those that work on Bainbridge Island. And again, I would seek reimbursement from the state. Now, I think beyond this, if the state's not, you know, wanting to reimburse us or fights that, I think there's, you know, that's not the only thing I would do. There are actually two ongoing sales taxes dedicated to affordable housing, right? One from ordinance twenty twenty-one oh five, which comes in with less than five hundred thousand per year, and then from ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-seven, which is thirty to thirty-five thousand per year. That's a pot of money that comes in for affordable housing every year, and I actually think that maybe we should give HRB a line item in our budget. And I think I'm the only one who's proposed that, and I've told them this directly. They are doing the work in the community, they're the only ones who are really successful at it, and if we put the money with them, it'll go a bit farther. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, you can just set that microphone down. Thank you so much. You were all incredibly respectful of Kaylee's time warnings in the back, so thank you for that. You allowed us to finish even a little bit earlier than we had anticipated. I'm going to turn it over to Phaedra. If Phaedra, you can come on up here. But I realized, I was so excited to get started, I didn't tell you who I am. So, thank you for going on this journey with this mystery person up here. My name is Maggie, I work for HRB. My title is Public Policy Director, but the vast majority of the work I do is with our city electeds and appointed folks who serve on commissions like planning commission. Okay, Phaedra, it's all you.
Okay. I just want to say thank you so much to all of you candidates for your participation, and thank you all for coming out tonight, when you could have been home watching apparently many sporting events that are happening. I don't watch sports, so I'm not knowledgeable. If you aren't already signed up for our advocacy alerts, please do sign up tonight. We can send alerts to your email when there's an opportunity for you to advocate for affordable housing, so we will keep you in the loop on that. And lastly, please make sure that you vote and turn in your ballots as soon as you can. For it to be counted, you have to return your ballot by eight P.M. on November the fourth, which is election day. But earlier, better. If you're going to use the post office, it has to be postmarked by that day, or you can find a ballot box, which there are several all around, and you can find them by going to kitsap.gov/elections. So, thank you all very much.
On that, there has been notices from our county auditor and all around the country that if you're planning to mail it, you should probably do it five to six days earlier, because United States Postal Service is so unpredictable and understaffed that postmark might not happen in time for you. So, there's a drop box real close over here, do that.
Use the ballot box, you don't have to pay us.
Use the ballot box.
Thank you all for coming. I mean, this is very impressive. Thank you.